Okay, Board of Education, we call this meeting to order. The approval of the agenda?
May I motion we approve the agenda?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I bring this to the proposed 2017-18 budget discussion.
All right, good evening. Thank you for hosting us for our first in a series of joint meetings to talk about our budget proposal for next year. Let me first of all, kind of go through what you have in hard copy in front of you before we get into the formal presentation. All of this, I believe, Ms. Cota was sent last week to you electronically. So you've got a copy of the presentation. We're also pleased to provide you with a year-over-year comparison that shows our current budget and how that compares to our proposed budget. And that goes from the comparison to the prior year. The back of that is the comparative expenditures by major function, and then kind of a graphical piece at the very end. The next series of worksheets were Excel documents that were put together that basically give you additional detail that shows you how we came to these numbers on the summary sheet. So we wanted to make sure that both boards had the backup to justify or that rolls up to this summary document. And then the final document you have is our charter school payment allocation. This is a workbook that communicates how we currently allocate funding, what percentage of our funding goes to the charter schools versus goes to the school system, and how that is funded, and how we would propose that allocation would be made for next year. So I hope that this additional detail, we're not going to get into the detail of this, at least from our side from a presentation standpoint, but we wanted to be very transparent with the county and with our board and show you where we would propose to spend our funding. So here is, at a very high level, these are kind of the areas of focus for the presentation this evening. Now, what I will say, and I should have said this at the beginning, the key word at this budget, where we are today, is the word "draft", because a lot is probably going to change at the state level in particular, perhaps at the federal level, that may or may not have implications for our draft proposed budget. So what you have today in front of you is probably not going to be the final version that you will get for approval in May or later on in this year, in the next few months. So there's a lot of moving parts to this budget, as you well know, and a lot of decisions have to be made at the state level in order to help us get to where we need to be. But this is where we are today, and I just want to impress upon everyone to use the word "draft" and put that in the back of your mind, because I am predicting this will change. The other aspect of this, there's a lot of this that still needs to go through our finance committee, our facilities committee, and our technology committee. So those board committees will be meeting in the next couple of weeks, because we need to make some other decisions. But essentially, we'd like to show you, you know, communicate our areas of the budget that are our focus, our priorities, what are we projecting from a charter school enrollment, what are we projecting in terms of funding sources, and then what does our financial outlook look like for next year. Our major focus areas for this budget are around three high-level ideas. Number one, academic programming. The large majority of our budget goes towards instruction, goes at the classroom level. You will see that as a major thing. The second one is around human capital. We know we've got to do, continue to do a good job with recruitment and retention of principals, of teachers, of different employees, as well as with development. And the third one is kind of overall continuous organizational improvement. So from an academic programming, this budget will be supporting major, major efforts around literacy. Literacy in Union County is a big, big push, and we are prepared to go to our board, hopefully at the May board meeting, for the announcement of a new literacy campaign for Union County Public Schools to take effect for next year. A lot of emphasis on college and career readiness, dual-language programming, and then one-to-one teaching and learning in terms of what are we doing at the classroom level to support teachers around our one-to-one blended learning strategy. From human capital, you'll see elements on here around recruitment and retention, especially for our teachers and staff that are in our needy schools. You also see elements here around compensation. And then finally, from an organizational standpoint, we know that this budget will help fund different strategies to help us continuously improve as a system, to become more effective, to become more efficient, and to become much more transparent in what we're doing. This is at a very high level, kind of the process that we put into place this year. When I came in and looked at how we had budgeted, one of the questions that I had for our staff was, when do we go back and look at what's working, what's not working? How do we make decisions around budget? So we adopted what I call a kind of a modified zero-based budgeting process, where every single department head went line by line, program by program, looked at staffing, looked at everything, to say, how do we know that what we're doing is making an impact for our kids? And so you'll see in this budget, a lot of this has been, we spent a long time as a senior-level team really digging deep into program effectiveness and some possible changes that we could make to become more efficient and more effective. So kind of where we are right now, obviously, is our joint meeting. You'll see four arrows towards the right on the bottom that really communicate where we need to go in the next few weeks.
So is it correct that your board has not had input into this?
No, they have. We presented the budget to the board at our April board meeting.
I watched it.
Okay. So we've had some discussion. Our finance committee still needs to meet again on April the 25th, but I've received a lot of feedback from our board. We are on track to officially submit the budget to the county by May 5th. That's our deadline. This is kind of a look at our enrollment. As you're well aware, we have had more kids going to our charter schools here in Union County. We're projecting for next year for that trend to continue. While we are not, while the county is not opening any new charter schools, we do have a few that are expanding. They're expanding their grade levels, and we believe that's going to have an impact. And so this is just a slide to communicate we're projecting the charter school numbers to go up a little bit, and DPI is projecting our enrollment to go down by almost 100 kids. So you'll see in the presentation where we calculated that from a financial standpoint. This is a slide that really kinds of looks at where does our funding come from? And as you can see, we've taken this, and instead of having this across four or five different slides, I thought it might be helpful for everyone to see, how does this all work together? And as you can see, from 2008 to this current year, we have had a slight trajectory of an increase when it comes to all funding sources. So what you'll have here is your state funding is the bottom. That's what we get for our state allocation. The purple is our federal funding, Title I, Title II grants. Your green is kind of your county operating, and then the blue would be your county capital. So these are the actual budget numbers that we've had since 2008. So at the state level, we're making a few assumptions as to what's going to happen with their budget and what's going to happen from an allocation standpoint at the state level. Because whatever happens at the state, because we have locally paid employees, we have to make those adjustments for our local folks as well. Right now, as you all know, where the state is looking at K-3 class size, we don't know if and when the Senate will pick that up. But that class size reduction, if that doesn't change, then we're going to have to figure something out. We're making the assumption that some kind of increase will be given at the state level to teacher salaries. Same with principal and assistant principal salaries. They're discussing how to do that, if they want to do a block grant or different other kinds of sources. We're making the assumption at the state level that your non-certified employees will have a pay raise. Health insurance and retirement costs we're projecting to go up. And then we did get confirmation from the states a few weeks ago that we will be losing our low-wealth funding. I believe the system has known for some time now that that was coming. We have historically gotten about almost $1.6 million from the state, and they have come to say, your county is no longer considered to be low-wealth. And so we have been zeroed out. And that is going to have an impact on our services and particularly on schools. A lot of that money, all, if not, all, John, I'm not sure if all, or the 95% of that funding goes directly to schools. So the local level, again, based on what happens with the state, we're projecting that we may need additional teachers for our K-3 class size. We're projecting that we'll have some salary and benefit cost increase, same with cost of living. And then we're making the recommendation to our board that we know we're in the window right now to refresh and replenish a lot of our technology. Last year was the year, or this current year was the year that we needed to replace the laptops for a large number of our teachers and administrators. We've delayed that for a year primarily because of the charter school issue that you all are very well aware of. So that's on the table, as is grades 6 through 12. Next year would be the window where we need to replace our laptops for our kids in grades 6 through 12. That still needs to go through the technology committee, because I think we need to make some decisions as to, do we do all 6 through 12? Do we do just 6, 7, and 8? Where do we have flexibility on that? But we're making the recommendation to do a capital lease as opposed to buying. I've never been in a school system where we've bought technology like we have here, but I have some philosophical differences of why you should lease and not buy. And I'm asking our board to consider a capital lease for these as opposed to a purchase. So this is kind of the revenue allocation outlook at a very high level. We use the 1617, the current county appropriation, just as a baseline to build the budget. We're projecting, you'll see a line here for our projected fines and forfeitures, as well as our fund balance appropriation. We're projecting the line that you will see there because of the projected increase to charter schools in terms of charter school enrollment. We're projecting that number to go up. And then you'll see here on the estimate impact if House Bill 13 is not passed by the Senate. So this is at a very high level, kind of where we would project our revenues to come from. In terms of expenses, the top half of this page really addresses the projected mandatory expenses. These would be the results of, if the state takes action, we'll need to take some action on our end at the local level. This is where you'll see salaries and benefits, the any kind of estimated salary increase, any kind of estimated utility cost. And then if they do anything around principal and assistant principal salaries, we have assistant principals that are funded at the local level. We'll need to make that adjustment as well. The bottom are really kind of additional increases above and beyond the mandatory that I think are pretty signature items to this budget. The very first one you'll see is called a school improvement initiative. And what you'll see here are five or six line items that really address some changes, I believe, we need to make with our schools, six of our schools that really need additional resources. What we're proposing here is, in these schools, this is four elementary and two middle schools, what we're projecting here is to do a couple of really innovative things. Number one, all of our teachers in these schools receive a $1,750 local supplement to work in their high-priority school. I'd like to double that for our core teachers. So if you teach kindergarten, first grade, second, third, fourth, fifth, or math, science, social studies, English language arts, the proposal is to double that to $3,500. The reason for that is purely around recruitment and retention, to recruit and retain our highly effective teachers in those schools. The second one is also kind of a school leadership, principal, recruitment, retention. This is actually going to be billed also as a performance type. So our principals, in order to, in these six schools, to meet or to be eligible for that funding would have to have a performance piece tied into it. The third one is around leadership training and support. That is really around coaching and monitoring of school performance. The last two are pretty big deals to me and to our board, I believe. In these six schools, we know that our poorest, neatest kids need more resources. And the theory here is that if I can give them more time in school and if I can give them daily intensive tutoring, that those two aspects, in addition to teacher quality and teacher effectiveness and school leadership and culture, those two pieces can really help our needy kids. I'm currently in the process, I went to one school today, we're going to meet with faculty members at all six of these schools to get their feedback and their input on this as a proposal. But the idea here is to extend the learning time, extend the school day by an hour. Right now, we're considering, how do you do that? Some schools would like to do that and say, you know, three out of five days a week, I can do that, and I can do after-school tutoring for my needy kids. And transportation is built into this as a payment. You've got some schools that have said, well, I get it, we want to do this, we're in, but we really need help with things like social workers and the wraparound services. And so we're still figuring that piece out. But the bottom-line premise and philosophy here is earmarking funds to allocate to our needy schools, our six low-performing, six needy schools, to help them continuously improve. You'll see continuing here the additional charter school allocation. Our board and I, our team, we've talked about, we'd love to give our bus drivers a salary increase, same with our maintenance workers, and then our other non-certified cost of living adjustment. So you've got, you've got a lot of members of the organization that would be impacted by these other additional increases. In terms of grades, so we want to do all this, where does the money come from? On that piece, again, here's where you'll see where departments have gone through and identified where we can make some cuts. Now, because of low wealth, the loss of low wealth, and because of additional things like, we're not going to have the same teacher allocation next year as we did this year because of the loss of kids to charter schools, you'll see here, a significant aspect of this would be personnel reduction. That's going to be a big, big aspect of this budget. And then what we're estimating our increase to be at the county level in terms of operating appropriations in order to balance this out. So that's kind of the general operating piece. Let me stop there and see if anyone on either board, I guess, has questions or comments about that piece before we get into capital.
You have $4 million in personnel cuts. Explain those teachers or where is it?
What we're projecting right now is, and I don't want to cite the numbers, but because of the loss of low-wealth funding and because of the loss of our kids that are choosing to go to charter school, we've got to make some reductions to teachers or other types of staff that are funded as a teacher, support staff, et cetera. When you lose kids, you're going to lose, you're going to lose funding. So that allotment is going down. The other aspect of that is, again, departments have gone through and we've really dug deep to see, are we overstaffed? How can we get a little bit more lean from a central services perspective yet still offer the same level of quality, effectiveness, and efficiency? So I'm not at liberty right now to discuss those departments or those personnel decisions, because we're not there yet, but it's a combination of school support, personnel, and also central services.
Christian, we've been hearing about this K-3 create need for 50 teachers, but yet we're talking about decreases in teachers. I don't understand that, you know, because you're asking, talking money for the additional teachers for the K-3, but yet you're going to cut some here.
Well, essentially, you've got certain types of certified staff that are not classroom teachers, but they are certified teachers providing support, if that makes sense. So one aspect of this is, if we cut a position and you're a certified teacher in K through 3, you might slide into a K-3 classroom teacher position. You're not going to, but that job, that's central services job, would go away. So you're not necessarily, in that case, you'd have to go line by line to look at, do we actually need 50, or is it going to be 30, because I've got 20 that can slide into this position?
You're talking maybe like curriculum-type folks?
Yes.
That are not teachers, but have a teaching or in the teaching profession?
Correct.
That potentially could move to some of those open teaching.
Correct, okay. We also believe a lot of this could be, would be handled out of things like attrition, you know, freezing different positions or folks that resign or retire, and we freeze that position, and we don't let anyone hire for that.
And it's important to note that these allocations, the state says, if you've got this many kids, you get that many teachers, even if we find that, you know, so that's why you've got to look at it in the different pots. So if the K-3 thing doesn't happen, you won't need that.
But would you still cut this?
Correct.
I've got something I'd like to say, and I've expressed this right before. I don't think the one I extended day, my personal opinion, I do not think it will work, because we can't get drivers for all of our buses we have now. And you need to know the logistics. Elementary picks up in the morning, then high school, then middle. And then in the afternoon, elementary releases, then high school, then middle. Well, on those elementary schools, they're going to be releasing at the same time high school does. And the only way I think we can accomplish it is go to year-round school, which we do at Benton, I mean, Wall Bickett as an example. I mean, I just don't see how we can put more buses on the road with drivers. We've got 17, shorted 17, drivers right now that have buses. And that figures out to 51 double routes a day, because you've got three school systems, I mean, three different levels. And then as curriculum chair, I have been furnished, I have asked for information, and I've been furnished the number of teachers and teachers aid at each school, but I'm still asking and still waiting for non-instructional teachers. I want to know how many of those are, because those are the ones that could transition back into the ring. Now, the state mandates how many we have in the ring, but it don't mandate how many non-instructional teachers we have. And that's what, as a curriculum chair, I want to say.
Can you identify those schools, the four elementary schools that you were being?
So the six in total we've talked about is Walter Bickett Elementary School, East Elementary School, Benton Heights Elementary, Marshville, East Union Middle School, and Monroe Middle School. Those are our six, but the state deems as the lowest-performing schools that, again, we'd like to give additional resources to to do these kinds of innovative approaches. It's interesting, Mr. Raab has shared that feedback with us, and we're taking that under consideration. I'll just give you an example. Today, I went to East Elementary, and I don't have the funding to say to every single staff member, all your TAs, your nurse, your, all of the folks that are there, to say, you have to stay here for an extra hour every day. I don't have the funding to do that. What I do have the funding is to say, if this is approved by the county, say, here's your pocket of money, take transportation cost off of that first. Right now, and this happened about five years ago, three of the four of those elementary schools that we just mentioned are year-round, they're year-round calendar. However, the state removed the funding for them during intercession. So you've got kids that are, you know, at home for two, three weeks at a time beyond our normal holiday, and five years ago, they were coming to school and they were receiving tutoring. This funding might allow them to come back and do that. You've got buses rolling anyway, because we've got school in session. And so this might give additional funding to those three out of those four elementary schools to do something like that. The premise is still, you're giving your kids more time in school, which I believe would help.
And I agree with Dr. Huland there. I just think it will have to be through a year-round schedule, and we may have to pick up the funding for the remediation, since the state's not funding it, because, you know, those kids have, we've got, they're so low. One of them, we could be faced with four options, none or none. We've got to do something.
I agree with your concept of mentoring. I think actually you've got good demonstration in the high schools, because, you know, I did some looking in the redistricting process. The Western schools, Cupreson, Morgan Ridge, they have very robust mentoring programs. And some of the other high schools that are not performing as well have little to none. So I think mentoring really does, will make a difference. But you've got some logistics that I think will be difficult to overcome.
And that's, again, that's why I mentioned the word "draft". This is all still a work in progress, but I wanted everyone to know kind of what the intent is or the philosophy is behind this.
Is it still on the table, Dr. Huland, to look at perhaps a Saturday session in lieu of additional hours in the classroom size? Would that be feasible?
I believe that would be feasible. Again, and that came up today in my conversation with the staff at East. Their question was, how do the kids get there? You'd have to build in transportation costs to make that happen. When I was a principal, we did that. Now, I didn't have the ability to have busing, but for kids that could get to the school, not every kid, but our needy kids that needed that extra intervention, we did that. So that's on the table as well.
Not to beat Charlie Brown, but having taught 16 years, I can't imagine going six days. It reminds me of the snowmake-up days.
I was just thinking, I'm glad kids don't look.
Sorry.
I was just thinking, I'm glad kids don't look. I'm going to send my son this.
They'll all be long gone when they do.
What I'm describing, if you, to Mr. Helm's point, a lot of this is happening at the secondary level. Our middle and high schools are doing a lot of this. But for our year-year-round schools in particular, when they lost that funding five years ago, it is making an impact. I firmly believe that that loss of funding, to do this tutoring during the intercession, is making an impact.
I just want to say, I applaud Dr. Huland and the staff for thinking outside of the box, as this obviously is. We have six schools where potentially administrations and/or teachers could be at risk of losing their positions if these go into a turnaround situation as mandated by the state. So I think it is our responsibility to examine any opportunity to assist these kids get the quality education that they deserve. They have special challenges they're already dealing with in single-parent families, two-working parent families, limited access to the internet, and other opportunities that other students in some of our other schools have. And I frankly am pleased that we are looking at doing hard things that may not have an easy answer to implement, because the stakes are so high for those children.
The program that you have at Benton Heights that you're proposing, you've got that program there now, right?
Leader in Me is in its first year at Benton Heights, yes.
So in success, or?
Well, I'll let you go visit with the principal and draw your own conclusions.
It normally takes, you know, two to three years to really see the benefits of a program like that. It's not going to happen overnight, but I would, I would say that, you know, they're very pleased to have it initiated and started at their school this year.
And is that in those other schools that we're talking about?
It's in Rocky River and also, didn't you, Trail Elementary?
Not in those six.
Would there be a benefit to something like that first, and then seeing how that worked out, where there's an hour extra?
The Leader in Me takes a lot of volunteer work, and it takes, it takes a big coordination effort. And it's a different type of program, I don't know that. Every school. It changes everything.
It's a culture change, and everybody has, everybody from the janitor on up has to buy into it.
It's not just a pep rally to discuss leadership skills. I mean, it changes the reading program, the math program, it changes everything in the classroom. So you have to have the principal, the assistant principal, the teachers. It has to be a buy-in, they have to want to do it.
Easier to implement at Benton High School, it's a magnet-type school.
I think they were just enthused about it from day one, and they were prepared to do whatever it took. And also, when you think about one of the significant changes, it basically scraps your lesson plans, because you're doing a collaborative learning in small groups and different types of presentations and job responsibilities for the children in the school. So it's not just something that you can decide, hey, in July, we're going to, we're going to start Leader in Me. There's a definite timeline. There's a definite timeline to ramping up as well as implementing the, the program, training of staff, and, and building that you have to be prepared probably six months or more before the end of the previous school year to really be prepared to go.
It's a great program, but it, it takes a lot of sweat equity to make it happen.
What was the cost of that program?
$60,000. This year, we're looking at $60,000 for handheld, handholding and implementation consultation. Then there'll be follow-up costs for continuing education as well.
Most of that, most of, so I was the, a teacher at the founding school in Wake County that started that called A.B. Cummins Leadership Magnet Elementary School. And I, they started it in 1997, I came to work, worked there in 2001. And it's phenomenal. It's really about culture. I mean, it's fundamentally about school culture. But I talked to Candice Boatright over at Indian Trail. What she'll tell you is that, or even Blair Traywick at, at Benton Heights, ultimately it comes down to teacher effectiveness. But this is something that across the board, Mr. Seitz is correct, every single person has to buy in and has to be on board or will not work.
I think there are other things at other schools. I know East has a program, it's not Leader in Me, but they use a different type of program than has been in different, what are those?
Houses.
Houses, thank you, in different houses. So I think that each school is kind of allowed to adapt their own, you know, their own program or pick and choose, forget what, what the company is that the house comes from, it comes from.
I believe, the concept, I think, comes from Ron Clark. Ron Clark was a former National Teacher of the Year in, in the Atlanta area. But yeah, the whole piece around culture, for every single one of our schools, not just these six, but every, every one, we historically have said to our principals, that's a major piece, but you've got to own how you want to manage that. Some have chosen Leader in Me, some are looking at things like International Bachelorate, it depends on every, every different campus.
The legislation that we're talking about, that's going to mandate class sizes in head of school regardless of success or, not a big fan of that. I've never been a big fan of that. Back years ago, we went from the capacities in the schools up from 750 to 680 just because of a scope of a tent, because of class size reduction. And, you know, we have schools that are morally capable of being successful with class sizes the way they are now. And you may have some that do need some class size reduction, but I think that's more of a local-level decision that you could make, and you can determine the success in a particular school that you're looking at.
I agree, Spock. So let's jump to bond and capital. So this is the, again, the bond project schedule that I believe you all have seen in the past. Nothing has changed on this at all. Based on that, we're projecting this to be the bond cash flow request. It's our understanding that as part of our five-year capital plan, this needs to be, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, this needs to be recommended or, or approved by our board and then recommended to the county since that bond was passed in November. And then this is kind of the, the five-year-at-a-glance technology budget, technology and facilities proposal. Again, that both our technology committee and our facilities committee will be digging deep into these. What you'll see here is the green represents your, the appropriation or requested appropriation for capital, and the blue would represent the cost that it would be over the course of five years for our technology needs for the capital lease. That's the difference in, in breakdown.
I would like to say there, too, in the curriculum meeting, and I think I'm right here, Dr. Jones, at our 28th meeting, I have asked Dr. Jones to have the Chromebooks there and show me the content text on the, because I have, every parent tells me they can't find it. So, you know, whether I'm going to be a supporter of that bottom blue is going to depend on, I want to see the text that's there, that parents say is not, staff says is, I just want to, I want to get that meshed together.
So again, to kind of summarize, these are the three kind of big buckets or areas of improvement or areas of focus. And then we have just one slide that kind of gives a summary and the breakdown on if House Bill 13 is passed by the Senate, and then if it is not. And then finally, kind of a summary of the county capital appropriations. So this is everything at a glance, just shown a different way, same, same numbers. And that's it. Does anyone have to take any additional questions or comments?
Any questions? I want to thank you for allowing us to go to the new town, providing the staff to get their business at Trump House, very kind of trip, good for all of us. I appreciate, I appreciate the changes that you're making, I appreciate what you're doing, and I appreciate the board for doing this as well. You know, it's very good, planning's got a whole lot better than politics, and I think we all plan together, the citizens of this county, because.
Well, I want to thank our board and thank you all as well, and the staff, both our staff and Cindy and her staff. We've really tried to be much more proactive, I think, and transparent with this information to give this to you all very early in the process and to present publicly very early so that there are no surprises and that you're very well aware and informed as to what we're thinking about before even we get to May 15. So I hope that helps.
I certainly appreciate it.
Can I ask a question? What do you expect?
Sure.
Where it had alternate programs and services, you got over $2 million increase in that one, will the detail be in one of these sheets?
It should be. Sean?
That's related to the budget request for the extended date and the extending the hour.
Okay.
That's why you see that, that much of an increase. Those two line items are in that, in that particular paragraph.
Yeah, that kind of jumped out there.
Yeah. But I guess what Mr. Helms is saying is, will that be reflected in the Excel workbook?
It is in those sheets, but that's, that's directly what it's related to. It's there, yes.
Can we get soft copies of these spreadsheets?
Sure. Were they not?
Oh, were they?
Yes.
I think they were.
I remember seeing this, but I don't remember seeing.
There's a bunch of different tabs at the bottom of the Excel sheet, so you have to go through them all.
It's in there.
Me, I don't know technology.
But it's easy to miss when you're just looking at the first thing that pops up, you're like, okay.
I did the same thing.
And then you forget the folders that were a number of tabs. I did it the first time, so.
Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate you folks meeting with us today and the tremendous amount of information to absorb. So I put a lot of trust in the people that put it together. Just, just to help me understand, who is your, who is your finance committee? Could you, could you share with me who that is? Okay, and just, just so I understand the process, is looking at your, at your timeline, was, is it, is it the, is it this group, this finance committee that vetted this information on the 4th of April, the owners get down, gets down and digs deep through it with, with staff before it was, before it's printed to the overall board? Is that how that worked? Exactly. It goes through finance committee, will meet again the 25th, report it out, and the full board will approve on the 2nd, and then it will be submitted by the 5th, which is the Friday of that week, and then we'll come back on the 15th and make a proposal. Now, the only thing that could change, Jerry, is if the state senate starts to move on HB 13, which would basically go back or massage back in any way that K through three classroom size. So that $3 million figure that we had in there, that could potentially change last minute, or that could even change after we submit the budget to you prior to June 30. So that's one of the moving parts. Plus, the other moving part is whatever the legislature and the governor or whoever wins out decides what to do about teacher raises, which we would have to match. That could be a moving part up to the very end as well. But to answer your question, yes, if it goes through the process.
But just to cut, just to say, the finance committee received this information, just like you did on Tuesday, and we had our work session on Thursday. So it has not been submitted by the finance committee.
Previous versions have, and it continues to evolve.
The only backup we've seen is what you guys got on Thursday. We didn't have backup before that, but we've seen the proposal from Dr. Hulian and the proposal with respect to the six schools and all that stuff, but we have not.
We've asked questions.
And to the information that you've seen, particularly the year-over-year comparison, is feedback that came out of committee felt better represented to be able to look year-over-year comparisons as well.
Going back to trust, consensus is important, so I like to see that it's been thoroughly vetted in committee and then full board, and then, then you have, I, I can feel more confident at the information that you're bringing to me, that the Board of Education stands behind it, and I feel comfortable, and I can feel more comfortable with it.
It will be fully, it will be fully vetted by finance, and just, and like, I think Dr. Hulian started with this, the facilities committee has not reviewed the capital plan yet at all, and will do so in the next two weeks. And the same with the technology committee, the strategic planning, technology and transportation committee has not vetted their parts of it either. So all that has to come together yet as well.
And this is the draft superintendent's budget, so what you'll see in the timeline will be the draft for the education, and that's what you're seeing.
But it will be.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you all, Mr. Helms.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn, special meeting. Motion to adjourn?
Master Chairman, are we going into a further session?
Going to adjourn, join meeting, and then open a new meeting. I'm going to turn off the cameras and take the keys, so you can have your close session.
I have a motion. I need a second. Okay, all those in favor?